All right, folks, thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience and your opportunity now to comment on this item. The procedure here is that Mr. Weiner has asked that the item be returned to committee for further consideration. That will happen on Wednesday. And the way this works is if you'd like to speak, you'll just queue up and let us know who you are and we'll hear from you. No need to raise your hand, sir.
Will the committee...
Sir? Yes, sir. Yep. Sir, thank you.
My name is Barry Adams, Box 8574, Missoula, Montana. I live on the Missoula North Side. I've lived in Missoula for over, since 1978, off and on. In this, I have given you all a packet about the Rainbow Gatherings. I've given the mayor of this town a Rainbow Gathering DVD of the Wyoming Gathering of 2008, which shows what a Rainbow Gathering is and how we actually are. And I have a letter in here to President Obama asking us to be taken off the terrorist list. So if you don't mind, wrapping summary of a longer letter on the communication van and rainbow human beings, that's what you're looking for, a communication van. "I ain't no domestic extremist, yet here, in my own country, tis of thee, Department of Homeland Security and Missoula authorities wanted to second class Jim Crow people of my creed. A creed of spiritual kinship with all the peoples of the earth and folks who peaceably assemble on the commons, the public lands, circling to express prayers, good vibes for peace, called the Rainbow Family. I'd be one of the founders, you see. Don't join in branding me and my kind with a yellow star, a rainbow star. Don't join in putting Jim Crow on Rainbow Family. Remember Christmas addicts who died for the inalienable right peacefully assemble, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., just celebrated his birthday. All races, colors, creeds, religious beliefs, living inequality. All Swiss survivors remember Selma. I've been to prison for what I believe. Don't include Rainbow Creed. Remember June 2013, individuals, i.e. Rainbow Family and others, met with city council members, right here by your invitation. Montana Rainbow 2013 was a worked-out, with force service, lawful, peaceable assembly, first of its kind. The cleanups have been fine. The point is, do domestic extremists do things this way? Ain't no small thing. A label, domestic extremists, is a dangerous label in dangerous times. I've been shotgunned, right here in Montana, in 2012. Two sisters are killed in West Virginia in 1980 for being Rainbow Family. Please do not join in targeting. No to open season. Just say no to Jim Crow for Rainbow Family. Fans have uses, I might agree, but take Rainbow Family out of your game. By the way, where did you get this information? It might be the Supreme Court opinions about rights of creed applied to individuals like me. I give you DVDs, Wyoming Gathering 2008, shows the feds at work, Rainbow as-is, and a letter to Obama to see. I ain't no domestic extremist, no Islamist extremist, no terrorist. My family been in Montana since the early 1800s. I am an honorably discharged Navy, 1966, and just an American, a person of earth. Just say no to Jim Crow, no rainbow star on people of the creed. The Rainbow Family have the inalienable right to be. Strike the name. There ain't no peace without justice. And by the way, the Hells Angels came to this town in 2000. They spent a lot of money, they showed a lot of respect. They didn't do one extremist thing that I remember, but I know that the cops in this town rioted among the citizens who came down just to witness. Y'all remember that, don't you? So please. Whether you think it's a big thing or none, it's deadly. Bless your hearts. And I'll hold you a promise, John Wilkins. You told me before this meeting that you would take that name off there, and I appreciate you do that. And Jason Warner, you're my alderman. By God, I hope you do too. You just don't understand what it means to be Jim Crow in this country. I ain't no second-class citizen. I am an American.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Boxell. I'm a homeowner. I lived in Missoula for 36 years. I reside in the 1800 block of 7th Street. I'm a veteran. The first time when I enlisted, I took an oath to defend America from all threats, foreign and domestic. The second time when I joined the U.S. Air Force, I did the same. Many of you, including the mayor, have taken a similar oath for your positions. It's really disheartening when people like me and my friends, who have served this country, are being labeled extremists, a threat, and a hazard. I've been in this town for years. I'm a university graduate. Mr. Mayor, you and I suffered through a religious studies course together. So all I would like to say is, please, talk to people. Only people could communicate with other people. And as far as the communications van goes, I'm a radio operator. I'm a former assistant emergency coordinator of the Missoula Emergency Amateur Radio Service. So I like radio toys too. And we could use them, just like the situation, the avalanche. We have toxic rail cars with coal and balking fuel rolling through here on a daily basis. I'm all for emergency preparedness, but please don't do it on the backs of people who generally love this community and love this people and want to share in this experience, which is the Garden City. Namaste. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boxell. And thanks for the reminder, religious studies, that's a while ago.
Ray Harsh, remember?
It's fantastic. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Stephen Wells. I have, I own real property in Missoula, so I'm a taxpayer here locally. And I think, including the Rainbow Family as domestic extremists is basically ridiculous when you think about it. I mean, it's sort of false on the front of it. We all know about hippies, we've been around. Are hippies for peace and love? Well, everybody knows that. How do you, how are you going to just turn it around and say, oh, these hippies are now for extremism? Hippies are laid back. So just on the face of it, it seems to me that you're, the way that the grant is structured isn't correct. It's wrong, it's false, it's not valid. It's not a valid reason for the communications truck. Out of, I think about 42 Rainbow Gatherings, two have been held in the state of Montana. That would be an average of one gathering every 21 years. There was a gathering in 2000, there was a gathering in 2013. How long does this truck last? How long is it good for, when you buy it? What's its timeframe? Because you might be asking for the truck for an event that won't even, won't even happen in the truck's lifetime. The third thing I would say is, if you look at the gatherings, if you gather the data of problems they've had at the gatherings, of law enforcement problems they've had at the gatherings, I would say that you would find out that there's no evidence to support the contention that they are, that you could label them as domestic extremists. And I would say that for those reasons, you have a problem with the grant right there. Then not only that, it's basically bigotry. What it's doing is it's slicing off a little portion of our community in order to get a truck. And I would say that, as other people have pointed out, there may be reasons to get this truck. There's, we have thousands of people coming to town every weekend during the grizz games, and if something were to go wrong, it might be good to have the truck. You might need a large, you know, multitask. But you guys didn't put them on the application. Down in Nevada, we had a cattle rancher who had a standoff with the feds. And we have cattle ranchers all over Montana that live here 365 days a year, and you didn't put cattle ranchers down there as a possible domestic extremist. So I would say that, let's get the truck, but let's do it the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening on this item? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I wanted to thank the city council. I was reading about that you had all okayed a resolution to expand Medicare, and Caitlin had put that forward, and I want to thank you very much for doing that. My name is Diane Keefhoffer. I live at 1250 34th Street, apartment D202 in Missoula, Montana. I've lived here for eight years. I'm an alumni from University of Montana and University of Montana Law School. I'm a retired attorney, and I'm a member of the Industrial Workers of the World. And I want to know, do we really want another Ferguson here in Missoula, Montana? Even if you dress up this command vehicle as saying it's an emergency vehicle, and it's for emergencies, do we really want this $254,000 command vehicle? That means militarization of our police force? Do we want that here? Combating the Rainbow People as a terrorist group? Combating civil disobedience? Where would the Civil Rights Movement be without civil disobedience and Martin Luther King? The Boston Tea Party was civil disobedience. Do we still want to be slaves of the British Empire? I'd be arrested for picketing for better wages. How Major Mayor Egan would be arrested. He was with us demonstrating to get money out of politics last week. Are you going to arrest him? We don't need another Ferguson in Missoula. We don't need a command vehicle, no matter what you want to call it. A command vehicle that would command our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keefhoffer. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Feather Sherman, and I've been living in Missoula since 1988. I am an art educator. I got my master's degree at University of Montana, and I have been attending and volunteering for Rainbow Family Gathering since 1972, since the first one. And I don't believe we've ever had an incident where a SWAT team ever came in, other than in Montana in '76. There was a SWAT team that surrounded the prayer circle that happened, the hands-across-border ceremony between northern Montana and Canada with the indigenous people there. And there was, I don't know, maybe 50 people doing a prayer circle. And it was surrounded by a SWAT team, but there was no violence, there was no terrorists, there was no extremists. It was just a simple prayer. Jordan Hess, I agree with you. I think there's, I'm really concerned about the militarization of the police force, not just here in Missoula, but this is happening in a lot of other places. Why is this necessary? And, you know, I definitely am for having the help with a situation like the avalanche, the, you know, the railroad. I mean, we've already had that spill in Alberton with the toxic substances there. I mean, there's a very good use for it, but I'm extremely distressed and concerned about the wording of this and blaming folks who have worked very hard all their lives to feed other people, to live in peace, and to come in and clean up afterwards and do the best job that we can. And yes, there has been more people panhandling after gatherings. We are not, there's no membership to gatherings. People hear about them and they come. And a lot of people learn a lot when they come to a gathering, and they learn how to chip in and how to help out. Some people might not even make it to the gathering, they just might make it as far as the closest town and take advantage of it by panhandling. And if you've never been to a gathering, maybe that's what you think we're all like. Well, we're not. We're upstanding citizens, we raise our kids, we work hard, we pay taxes. I have hundreds and hundreds of kids in the Missoula area who come up to me on a regular basis and thank me for the teaching that I do. So I would really like you to reconsider this, because I think it is extremely unfair and inappropriate, and I'm concerned about all our citizens of Missoula being negatively impacted by something like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll try not to blow the speakers out. I hear I'm kind of loud. My name is Sue Bradford. I live on the 700 block of North Fourth West. I've lived in Missoula since 1989. I'm a doctor of education. I have a master's in environmental studies. I went to my first Rainbow Gathering in 1992. Curious, I had met people around town here who were good, upstanding people, and I thought I'd check it out. And as an environmentalist, I was very interested in cleanup and what exactly that meant. I met some amazing people, and I ended up coming back. I've been to over a dozen gatherings, probably more, I lost count. But I've helped with many cleanups, and I think the Missoulian article confuses the issue a little. Some of the statements made there were simply incorrect. There's never been any police assistance with cleanup. The Rainbows are extremely proud of the job they do cleaning up their sites and have never, on documented record, left a legitimate mess behind. If they miss a bag or two, they will go back and get it. Give someone a call. Here in Missoula, I participated in 2013 in the spring with an informative meeting, reaching out to the city to talk to social services people about the possible impacts. We didn't know at that time where the gathering would take place specifically, but we knew it was coming to Montana. And believe it or not, Missoula has a reputation among people as a fairly liberal town, so that's sort of where people often land, to find out where to go next. So we talked about possible impacts on things like the food bank and homeless shelters, transportation, some of the panhandling. And really, if the community relations were to improve, it would probably have a lot more to do with some well-educated social workers to deal with a special situation than anything related to intense law enforcement. So my comments, I was going to suggest a friendly amendment. I personally am not against having emergency preparedness. I agree with the observations. The Alberton incident, I think, opened our eyes to what is possible if something like that were to happen in this valley. We'd have the entire rattlesnake cut off. We could have some very terrible situations here that would merit a real emergency response. Ironically, there are in fact white supremacists in western Montana that could have been mentioned here. Fortunately, we haven't had any major incidents with all of that, but I thought that was ironic to single out the peace and love group instead of some bona fide groups. And I would suggest that in recent events, there's a legitimate concern about our local hero from Butte, Montana, involved with those notorious incidents to take out Osama bin Laden, has in fact broadcasted to all of the world where he's from, and we should be aware of the possibility that Butte, Montana could be targeted, and there could be a need for something like this, God forbid. But I would cite that as a legitimate domestic concern. I agree wholeheartedly with Jason's reasoning to return this to committee, the inclusion of activist protests as a possible reason for such a vehicle in addition to the Rainbow Family. And of course, the way the last Hells Angels incident turned out in 2000, with the might of the police turned against citizens, that's very disturbing. In sum, I think it's just unnecessarily inflammatory and culturally insensitive to the hundreds of Montanans that participate in these events within our community, throughout western Montana. You know, there's people who participate from Whitefish and Kalispel, from Plains, from Hamilton, from Helena, from Butte, from Dillon. And here in Missoula, there's people who attend gatherings, living throughout our region, who are fine, upstanding members of the community, local entrepreneurs, teachers, attorneys, doctors. It's just one of many things that people do in the summertime. So I would like you to be aware of that and remove this unnecessarily inflammatory language and the disturbing suggestion that a resource like this would be used against actual citizens of our community who pose no threat. I find that very disturbing and unnecessary. I would also point out that there is an error on page six of the grant. I actually read through this. I think the introduction could be fixed by removing those key inflammatory terms. I'm glad there's going to be a discussion in committee on Wednesday. I don't know if I can make that, because I work, but... On the last page where they, or no, page four of six, no, page six of six, I'm sorry, it is at the end, where the cost-benefit ratio of the project, it says A over B, and it's miscalculated as B over A. So correct your math. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Anyone else? Mr. Wells, you've been very patient. Step right up.
Harlan Wells, I live in Ward 2. I am a reserve sheriff's deputy, so I kind of have a little bit firsthand knowledge on some of the communication problems that go on throughout the state. One of the things they teach us in our trainings is that during 9/11, one of the biggest problems they had was the ability to communicate between the different police jurisdictions, fire rescue, ambulance. Everybody was on different radio frequencies, everybody was using different codes, and it just messed everything up. So one of the reasons why these funds for these types of things come through the Department of Homeland Security is because 9/11 gets funneled through. The Montana Military Affairs is the only state agency that can apply on our behalf for those funds, so that's why there's some of those scary names that go in there. I have been to some very remote places in this county where we have no radio, no phone, no nothing. And if that's the place where we end up having an emergency, we're going to be in big trouble. So I understand people's concern with the one label. I understand how that grant is written, because it's what I do, is write grants, and it's competitive, and you have A, B, C, you need to fill in each of those. Could be as simple as changing it from groups such as Hells Angels and Rainbow Gathering to groups such as Hells Angel, Hells Angels Dos Hermanos, whatever else. There's plenty of extremist groups that we can use, but the asset would be very beneficial for not just Missoula City, it'd be Missoula County and the surrounding counties. So I urge you, when you discuss this further, to take into consideration, take those things into consideration and support it. It's getting those kinds of federal grant dollars to help us protect people is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anyone else? Ms. Matthew Jenkins.
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper. I can understand the necessity for a vehicle like this, because we are in America at war with our own citizens. I would like to have protections extended to myself. I'm a constitutionalist. I'm a Christian. I'm married to a military man. I was married to a SEAL. And in this country, it's the American citizens that are going to need the protection against our own, hopefully not military, but our police officers too, because the handwriting is on the wall. And I'm not accusing any police officer of taking that bent, but I am accusing America for becoming a militarized country that is going to be at war with its own citizens. And we're seeing that already, all over the country. And it breaks my heart. But I also want to say that these people here, I'm thankful that they came tonight. I'm thankful that they have spoken so well, because they're speaking for every American that's here, every person that is trying to stay free and extend their liberties to others. And this is what's happening. When we have to have our police chief to watch over our city council almost every week, I feel that that's very sad. And I miss Mr. Bohan, because I think he's not coming anymore because of your ridicule and his fear of the police. And I shouldn't have to fear the police. They are here to protect me, and they're here to serve me, but I think a lot of them have forgotten that. And I am a taxpayer, that doesn't make me any special. But I don't want my money going to hurt other citizens in this community, and I feel that's what it'll be used for eventually, because that's the way America is going. We're not America anymore. We're America with a K. So remember, I'm a Christian, I'm a constitutionalist, and my family believes the same way. So you're here to protect me, okay? And so are the police, from losing my liberties and freedom.
Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, folks, this will be, yes, sir?
My name's Michael Baker. I live at 115 Turner Court, apartment number three. This is another comment about the same grant. So I believe a fair amount has been said about the label being applied...
Mr. Baker, I'm going to ask you to bring that microphone a little closer.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Test. I believe a fair amount has been said about the label being applied to the Rainbow Gathering. My concern is with the use of this vehicle as a vehicle to be used in response to security threats represented in the grant as groups of people, specifically with regard to not only the Rainbow Gathering, but in terms of like civil disobedience and activism. It seems like a rather expensive toy that's being offered for free, and it seems that when, you know, the police force has such a toy, they tend to use it unnecessarily. My concern is specifically with regards to civil disobedience. I feel that use of such a vehicle is scary to the populace, and I feel that when police officers dress up like soldiers and have the toys of soldiers, that they begin to have a soldier's mentality, which prevents diplomacy in handling situations in a logical and calculated way, or, you know, a compassionate way, similar to, you know, putting together IKEA furniture with a chainsaw. I hope that you guys vote to not approve the acquisition of this vehicle unless if the vehicle is explicitly stated to be for non-militarized use and its functions are well-described in a non-militarized fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else?
My name is Darla Torres. I'm a local midwife here in Missoula. So I'm sorry I got up out of my sick bed to talk to you tonight, but I'm begging you, Mayor Egan, to not do this for exactly the reasons that this guy just said. I don't really care what you, you know, how you want to scapegoat, or how the cops want to scapegoat a bunch of hippies that gather a couple hundred miles away, or whatever, but I do want to remind you of what happened in 2014 years ago, right? Because it was the cops that rioted because of the Hells Angels. It was the cops that did it, because they militarized themselves. It was the cops that rioted because of the citizens of the city, not the hippies and not the Hells Angels, right? It was the citizens that were exercising their rights of free speech, and it was the cops that rioted. So let's just remember that when we're trying to scapegoat people here, okay? I mean, Homeland Security has been issuing these things to cities, small cities all over the country, and at the same time, the cops are shooting people of color, and the same time, they're using these things to shut down nonviolent protests and to shut down people's rights of free speech, and Missoula wants one of these? My city, Missoula, wants one of these? Mayor Egan, really? Really? You're going to do this? You're going to turn Missoula into what? And what are you going to turn Missoula into? Missoula doesn't need another one of these things. Missoula doesn't need to militarize. Please don't, please, please, just don't. Just don't do this. At least just put it off. Just actually get some public comment. That article was a week ago. I was sick. I just got out of my sick bed to come talk to you. At least give it a little more time, okay? Homeland Security is going to give you that money next year, two years from now? They really, really want you to have this thing, and we don't need it. We don't need it. We don't need this thing. We don't need it. The cops don't need this thing.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that near too long?
Near too, and just fine. I know the feeling.
My name's Raymond Armstrong. I live at 620 South Third Street West. And after, I had to retire because of health reasons, and soon as I retired, headed right straight back to Missoula. This is my home state, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm a Vietnam vet. I'm 80% disabled. I was a security guard for the CBs. And then, when the captain went on the road, I was one of his bodyguards. And then, we had some road crews. When they went out to certain areas, I went along as guard against snipers. I'm not a sniper. I was just a good shot. That was all. So, anyway, I come back and getting discharged after two years in Vietnam. And they were having peace administrations up at Berkeley. So, I hot-footed it up to Berkeley and participated in that. And when I got back, the Navy found out about it and was wanting to throw me in the brig for a while. Anyway, I've been there. I've seen it. I've done it. I don't want to see any more of it. And a vehicle like this is too easy, can be too easily used against the general populace. As a matter of fact, Vietnam vets at one time were labeled as being against the government and like terrorists. And they finally rescinded that. And so, I'm no longer automatically, you know, against the government. So, I just don't, gosh, I've got to find a better way. Because that can be too easily turned around and used on us. I've already been called a terrorist once. It could happen again. I'm an activist in the political scene here, and I'm going to keep going with that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Anyone else? All right. So, we'll have some more opportunity on Wednesday of this week. And any further comment from councilmembers? Mr. Wilkins?
I'm not taking sides to this issue yet till we have a good conversation, but I would like you all to look at actually what we're buying. The thing looks like a motorhome. It doesn't have gun ports. It doesn't have machine guns on it anywhere. Doesn't have a place to put it. It's used for communications. It's used to be able to hook up computers to it. And, you know, like, if Ravelry County had their computer, it had the system that it'll take Ravelry County's. It could be used for fires. It was unfortunate that that terminology came up about the Hells Angels and the Rainbow. And I apologize for that with my committee. The biggest thing is this thing could really help us. So, look at what we're actually buying. I mean, I got the impression from a couple of you that this must be an armored vehicle with gun ports and machine gun things and stuff like that. And it isn't that at all. So, we'll decide whether, what we're going to do Wednesday. But if you can get a picture, if the city can put a picture out on it, that actually what this thing looks like, it looks like a motorhome.
Ms. Bentley?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming down tonight. I'm planning on supporting Jason's motion to send this back to committee to discuss it. When we discuss it the first time in committee, I had concerns about the vehicle being used to spy on Missoulians in their homes. And so, that's something that I also want to discuss when we send it back to committee. But I just really want to thank you for coming out and your vigilance.
Anything else? All right. With that, we'll have a voice vote on the question of whether to return the item to committee. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries, and that item will return to committee?